electronically reviewing them internally or personally and then sharing them with Nick so we can not have a meeting but still keep the momentum going.
I'm sorry, there was some audio that went over when you were just talking. Can you repeat that?
Yes, Cravik had shared some drawings of the Ed and the architects on Cravik Drive, that project. And they wanted a special meeting prior to the next work session. And my, my thought was instead of having a special meeting, and there were a couple of members that were opposed, that we would just have, you'd make comments over the next three days or so. Get them to Nick and we'll summarize them, get them back out to everybody, make sure that they're accurate, and then send them over.
Yeah, I would say by the middle of next week, you know, we could probably have comments.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it. Just say Wednesday then, Nick at noon.
Okay, I've got seven o'clock and I just want to let everybody know that I've got the recording started for the meeting. And this will be available on the town website if anybody wants to recap.
Okay, thank you. And I want to make sure, so I see we've got Doug, Nathan, Steve, me, we got a forum. Who else do we have on?
You're first.
Pardon?
Steve Wilson with McDonald's.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Before we start, Steve, I've just got to do some housekeeping here. We had no work session. It's the 22nd of October. And we, do we have any work sessions? We'll probably have one, I guess, with, in the next meeting with Cravik Drive, Nick?
That's correct, for November 3rd, I believe it is.
Okay, so that's, wow, that's right around the corner. Okay, and then, uh, do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion, Steve.
Steve, second.
I'll second, Kevin.
Kevin, thank you.
Kevin, thank you.
Yeah, and then, all in favor?
Steve, aye.
Nathan, aye.
Peter, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Okay, uh, so the gentleman from McDonald's, I've got a short-term memory here. You're first on the list, and I think I'll just have Stephanie, I think you've worked hard on this with Nick and Andy, nodding the i's and crossing the t's, and I thank also the applicant for their persistence and managing through this process. Stephanie? Stephanie, are you there?
Sorry about that, I was muted. Is everybody able to see the plan here? What's up a moment ago?
Yeah.
There we go, perfect. So there's-
Yeah, I'm sorry, Stephanie, I'm on the phone, so I can't see anything tonight.
Okay, got it.
You gotta trust us.
Stephanie, you have to let me in because I'm not seeing any video. I'll give you the sound.
Um, I don't see anybody who needs to be admitted to the waiting room, and if you could hear us, that tells me that you are in the meeting.
Can you go back, turn it off, and turn it back on?
There you go. All right, and, um, yeah, so this has, this has been through you through many weeks, and we've just been looking at getting the last nitty-gritty details down. The board has a few open items left to review, including the installation detail for the fence. And Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong or jump in at any point, but the metal fence that's proposed for screening at the rear of the building here is, it's supposed to match the decorative louver proposed on the front of the building underneath the siding. And I can scroll down to the installation detail, pretty standard issue. All the material is called out, it's consistent with what is proposed for the louvering with a slightly narrower gap, just to provide some opacity. Does anybody have any comment about that?
What is the material vinyl?
It's a metal louver.
Oh, metal louver, okay, yeah, that's preferable.
Yeah. All right, and there were also a couple new shrubs that were added in the back of that structure. And there's actually quite a few shrubs that are shown, if we go to the existing site here. There's going to be two arborvitae that will be added to that, and it will be in front of the fencing material that we just discussed. Spin around here.
No, where am I?
A moment. All right. Just to give you a look at the back of the site. Sorry, that's where our new Taco Bell is going to go. So there's a variety of low-growing shrubs down here, and the new proposal will include two arborvitae that will be behind this, this existing menu board. So it should tie into the landscaping scheme, and if there's any other comments about the landscaping back here, we can get this addressed now.
Okay.
And the area within the fencing is proposed to be asphalt, and I think that the last plan that we showed showed the, um, the curving tying into all this new pavement back here. So it cleaned it up pretty well. And I think that that was just a technical comment, I don't believe that that was a real concern of the board members. And, and looking through these plans, I had one very last comment. I noticed that the previous commission had proposed red maples along the street, and subjected to the heavy road salt, those can become really chlorotic, and they're not at their best. And we had requested a more tolerant species, and what is shown on the landscaping here is a pin oak. And those actually have the exact same problem. They'll survive, but there'll be a lot of yellowing. So I would recommend going with an alternate tree. And Steve, if you'd like me to make a recommendation, just so we could get this incorporated into the approval for tonight, I'm, I'm prepared to make a couple.
What, go ahead.
I would recommend either the Princeton century ginkgo tree or a Kentucky coffee tree, if you prefer something that's more native. And that's, that's also for the board members to chime in on.
What was the second one again?
A Kentucky coffee tree.
Yeah, I'm not too familiar with that, I know what the ginkgo is. So I guess I'd go with the ginkgo.
Okay.
That's okay.
A great choice.
Stephanie, do they have similar profiles, I mean, similar heights and ball of bone?
They do. Both of them are really hardy to a wide range of urban conditions, with the caveat that they take a little bit longer to leaf out in the spring. So it's, it's not going to look fantastic in the spring, or even on the first couple of years after installation, but eventually, they're, they're both going to become a really large and beautiful tree. The site is unencumbered by overhead wires, so if we could go, get away with something large like that, I think we should do so.
Stephanie, and where would these go?
This is along Thompson Road for the street tree planting.
Okay.
All right, and there was one last note in here to confirm the height of the light pole. And I'm not sure if you have that information available, but the maximum mounting height is 20 feet for the lighting design guidelines for restaurant use.
Even for an existing use that's just being remodeled?
That's correct.
Hold on, let me see if I can confirm the height real quick.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I guess, does it matter whether I can confirm the height or not? I mean, if they're not 20 feet, or if they're taller than 20 feet, you're telling me I should change them?
We could put that in the resolution.
Yeah, we'll put it in the resolution. We can, we can decide that administratively. As long as the board's comfortable with either species, as long as we get the right height, then if not, we'll bring it back and confirm.
Okay.
Okay, and the very last figure that I want to confirm with you, Steve, is the overall parking count. We had arrived at 51, and I noticed that your parking table at the top here shows 52 spaces.
I think the 51 is correct.
Okay, because I know that one was just removed in front of the dumpster area.
Yeah, I think it's updated with the change.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the board members? A motion to approve this plan is presented with the following findings and conditions. The improvements to this site are also in connection with the improvements to the site as necessitated by the town to supply access to the adjacent parcels. In order for these access improvements to have been constructed, many previously existing parking spaces have been eliminated. The project has previously approved 63 parking spaces, town code requires 76. Due to the, uh, the town having been the initiator of the access improvements, remaining parking spaces on the site and for this plan is 52.
52?
51.
51, man.
Okay.
And according to the new, and accordingly, the new baseline of parking spaces for this site, for all purposes of approval and performance, is 51 parking spaces. Additionally, it has been noted that the nature of the drive-through, the fast food evolved such that the requirement for parking required for dine-in is reduced. No signs are approved just for this approval. The lighting plan has been presented, not approved as part of this plan. Separate planning board approval for the same will be required.
And we could add on that, the pole height for lighting fixtures
Yes.
must be a maximum pole height of 20 feet.
Okay, and then, did you want to put the trees, the, or is that just going to be part of the plans?
And I'll put that as well. The street tree shall be replaced with Princeton gecko?
It's a Princeton century ginkgo tree.
Ginkgo, okay.
Could you, could you clarify the lighting plan? The lighting plan is not approved as part of this?
We received it, did you, did you approve it, Stephanie?
So the, the only outstanding issue on the lighting plan was the pole height. We just need to confirm that that's within the guidance.
All right, so then I withdraw the lighting plan as presented, only as regarding to the pole height, so you're all set.
So the lighting not approved is- Here, can we talk about, can we talk about the fact that we're not having the two signs on the front?
Yeah, we, that's not something we allow. And then, you're on the front. We took off, you took off the M on Erie Boulevard, and, and so it made it one sign.
I just want to make sure that was conveyed as part of this approval.
Well, I, I, we, we asked them, but that's not part of the approval, the signs are not part of the, okay?
That way you can just, we just won't approve or disapprove anything, it's just, no, nothing with the sign, you have to come back.
I'm sorry, you broke up there, say that again?
Just that nothing will be approved, it, it will just be, you have to come back once you figure out if they're going to take off the M or want to do something else or go for a variance.
Okay.
That's the last item that, that you need to come back to us for. This approval is for the plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant, and requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for the certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, deletions to the scope of the work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved and have subject to further site plan review pursuant to the town of Dewitt, code section 192-122. May I have a motion, I have the motion, a second motion?
This is Kathy, I'll second it.
All right, Kathy, all in favor, let's, Kathy?
Kathy, yes.
Yeah.
Steve, yes.
Yeah.
Joe, yes.
And Joe.
Kevin, yes.
Peter, yes. Doug? All right. Okay, congratulations, passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So when I confirm what I've done with the signs, I reply just for that?
Yes, everything else is approved, or if there's any-
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Dear Roach Warehouse Phase 3, I think we got a lot done over the last couple days.
Yeah. Hi, this is Rob Seeley from EDR, here on behalf of the project.
Okay.
Hey, Rob, what would you like to start with, the, the site or the architecture?
Um, either one, whatever you got.
The site, sure. And I just want to remind everybody, if you're not actively speaking, to please mute your microphone.
Yeah, Stephanie, and I think Nick's going to have to take the lead on this, okay?
Okay.
Uh, Nick, would you go through this, Stephanie's recusing herself in terms of any, because of her employment with EDR. And I've asked Nick to manage this presentation.
Right, so, Rob, feel free to chime in at any time here.
Okay.
So I think over the last week, week and a half, we've been working with Rob Seeley at EDR to resolve the issues of the site circulation with the truck at the loading dock at the southeast corner, and the paving of the asphalt also at the southern corner. Is my microphone, that's breaking up there? Okay, I'll continue, so.
We can hear you.
Okay. So, one thing on the, on this plan is the relocated fence has been moved to allow for truck turning radiuses. Stephanie, if you could pull up that truck turning plan?
There you go.
Perfect, thank you. So, Rob, correct me here if I'm wrong, but the board would like to see, I think, that loading dock area potentially be removed, and if needed in the future, you would come back for a potential future approval, just because of our concern with the site circulation.
Yeah, you're talking about the one at the far east end?
Yes.
Correct. On the bottom graphic. Yeah, so I talked to the client, he said he'd be willing to remove that door from the plan, or from the, the elevation. So then the first overhead door would be about 34 feet from the, from the eastern corner there. And with, with a truck parked at that dock location, you'd have about 20 feet from the front of the cab to the edge of pavement. So there would be room for circulation around it.
Okay, that resolves that issue.
Well, and again, to reiterate what we talked about last time, this is a flex space, so, so this graphic was showing the worst-case scenario. The intent then is not to build that, that door, you know, any more doors than is necessary.
We understand, but we didn't, we couldn't approve it without, you know, us having competence in the traffic flow. So, uh, it's not being approved, but you have the right to come back with a traffic management internal, so that we can review it again if you do need that for your, whoever your tenant is.
Understood, thank you.
Nick, anything else?
Yeah, so Mark Page has been reviewing the lighting plan, and there were a couple of comments on that. We will need to see the light levels at the property lines before we make an approval on the lighting plan. And we also need the product cut sheets for the light fixtures.
Okay, I can get that information. So, so the intent is they're, they're going to be the same as what's out there now, they're pre, pre fixtures, but I can submit that information.
Yeah, we'll just include it, that it's, it's not approved at this time, and when that gets resubmitted, then we can.
Okay.
And then, last item was the dumpster enclosures. The project's previously approved with a masonry block for all the dumpster enclosures at the first two buildings that have been built. So I think the board, to maintain that consistency, would like to see the dumpster enclosures remain the same type of material. Because I believe we are proposing a chain link fence with vinyl slats, is that correct, Rob?
Yeah, so the current plans, yeah, they called that, basically just, again, for that flexibility, that it'd be easy to relocate if needed. But I talked to the client today, and if, if the masonry is what's, he's, he's willing to do that.
It's basically standard in our commercial locations for the most part, especially with the truck traffic.
So, are we satisfied with what they have set forth on this plan right now?
With the exception of the loading dock and-
Well, I mean, I, I'm just talking about the dumpster enclosure. It's fine the way it is shown right now?
No.
No, a new detail has to be provided.
A new detail, okay. And, but then with respect to the other buildings, just go back to whether that other detail is, that was from 2015?
I'm correct, so Rob will be the thing to tell.
Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can submit the detail for that.
We also need those, the, the first and the second building, they, they were not built yet, they, we do need to have those completed.
Yeah, so those are on, um, let's see. You go to sheet 002, which is the second sheet at the PDF, Stephanie, that shows the, um, all six of the dumpster enclosure, so there's two proposed at each building.
Okay.
And that's based on what's out there.
So are they all shared, or shared by tenant? What if there's three tenants? Because I noticed the other day, by there, there's lots of pallets all thrown out there, and just kind of a mismatch of stuff that didn't make it to the dumpster that was outside the doors and-
Yeah, so I, yeah, so there's currently four dumpsters at each of the two buildings. So we're going to have two dumpsters in each enclosure, and yeah, they would, they would be shared.
Okay, any other questions?
Could we just go to the planting plan? And I'd ask that, Rob, just break it through it very quickly?
Rob, have I got the correct sheet open here?
Yeah, it's, uh, let's see, B401, that's the ninth sheet. Yep, there you go.
Andy, you got me scared, so far so good though, huh?
You don't want that to happen.
She's scrolling through these, I'm getting, I'm just, bated breath.
Um, so the planting concept is a continuation of what's along building one. So there's, there's planting in between the buildings to block the views down into the back truck yard. There's a row of foundation plantings along the front, and street trees along the north edge of the parking lot, and then plantings in the island at the east end. And again, it's a continuation of what's, what's in phase one, so it'll be a contiguous planting scheme throughout the road franchise.
So what are the street trees?
Uh, they're, uh, red oak and honey locust.
Do we have any salt found on here with those red oaks, like we did at McDonald's?
Anyone, red maples?
It was a pin oak. Sorry, Steve, it was a pin oak that was proposed at McDonald's, and those are especially susceptible to chlorosis if they're subjected to salt spray. The red oak should be much more hardy.
They're pretty far away removed too, are they not?
Well, you got salt on the parking lot, I would imagine.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, any other questions?
We go to, and the architecture is, is a match to what's there?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the plan for building three as presented with the following conditions. The loading dock area at the southeast corner of the building is not approved. The applicant has agreed that it will be removed from the plan, and the plan should be revised accordingly regarding the loading dock and removal before the sign by the chairperson. The lighting plan presented, not approved as part of this plan, separate planning board approval for same will be required from the applicant. And must, uh, with, provide cut sheets, okay, and must also provide cut sheets showing lighting levels at the property lines, which must be within the parameters of the town code to obtain approval. Dumpster's enclosure for building one and two have not been completed, and the same must be completed and installed in accordance with the 2015 approval for building one and two as part of the required work. And the dumpster enclosure for building three is an enclosure, or there are two coming there, Rob?
What's that, the dumpster enclosures?
Yes, is there two or one?
There's two, two separate ones that leach fit two dumpsters.
Okay, so enclosures, the two enclosures will be, will match the masonry of the buildings one and two. No signs are approved for building, and the applicant must present to this board a multi-tenant sign plan for review and approval. This approval is for the plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant, and requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for the certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of the work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the town of Dewitt, code section 192-122. That's the motion, may I have a second?
Steve, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh, one question, I thi, we're not only deleting the loading dock, but we're deleting the overhead door as well, correct?
That, that would be my understanding, I think they have, uh, Rob's-
I'll, I'll add that in, the loading dock.
It has to go in the motion.
Yes, so, and that, and that middle elevation, the dash line on the far right, that'll be removed.
Okay.
Got it.
Yep, right there.
Thanks, Steve. All right, so I have a, a, a yes vote from Steve with that revision.
Yes, Kathy.
Nathan, yes.
Joe, yes.
Kevin, yes.
Peter, yes. All unanimous, thank you very much, Rob.
Can I ask a couple of questions, just so I'm clear? The, you said the lighting wasn't approved, does that have to come back?
No, that can be handled administratively.
Administratively.
It has to meet the, the code requirements, and our consultants and the planning board, the, the planning development people can, uh,
So it's just-
It would only have to come back if it varied out of code.
Gotcha, okay.
You said you had two questions, another one?
Oh, and about the signage, I'm talking to Andy, it's, it's, it's signed it on the north elevation approved as part of this? It was just the signs on the back, is my understanding?
To be honest with you, Rob, I'm not sure if that's approved in the original building. Definitely the signs in the back would need a variance, but the signs on the front, I'm not, I can't speak if they were approved from the first building.
Why don't we leave those off, and we can handle that, that sign on the first building, we can handle administratively if it has been approved. If it has not, then that'll need to be approved as well, with a multi-tenant package.
So, so the motion is no signs are approved, or?
With no signs, with the exception of the, whatever the description on the front of the building, if it had been approved in the 2015 approval process.
On buildings one and two?
No. Say which building specifically, Rob.
This is building two.
Building two.
On the top elevation, you can see there's three rectangles above the three doors. Those are signs that match the first building.
Okay.
Well, we're, I, I'm still a little confused, so were there signs approved on the first two buildings?
Yes.
Yes, Andy?
I, I'm not sure of that, to be honest with you.
Okay, so if we say no signs are approved for this building, for this building, except that, that exclude, and a multi-tenant sign plan needs to come in for re- that- that exclude, and a multi-tenant sign plan needs to come in for review and approval. That's, I think that's still what we want.
Yeah, I think it covers it if it turns out, uh, that it meets the code, then- then we can do it administratively, not the multi-tenant, just the building signs. You okay with that, Andy?
Yes.
All right. All right, Rob, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your flexibility and assistance.
Yeah, well, I- I gotta thank the, uh, all the consultants and Nick and, uh, EDR for, uh, and O'Brien and Gear for reviewing this, uh, as promptly as they did, they facilitated its passing.
Yes, I agree. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Yeah, all right, good evening.
Good night.
Uh, Peter, who made the second on the motion at McDonald's, please?
I made the most.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I made it.
Thanks, Kathy.
You're welcome, Jamie.
We have somebody here from Campus Wood Drive Off?
Yes, Terry Horse, Terry Horse Lansky of Architects.
Hi, Terry.
Hi.
Welcome. We have some issues here. Stephanie, you wanna put them up and regain your spot on the podium?
Yeah, sure, so, uh, this project is before the planning board as a result of some unapproved painting that had occurred, and the image up on the screen right now shows the prior building, um, sorry, I'm gonna see who's, uh- Okay, sorry, I'm having some speaker issues. If you're not actively speaking, please mute your mic. Yeah, so, uh, the existing building, um, a private, part of the painting was composed of, um, a nice red brick, and then it was painted without planning board approval to this cool gray motif. And we also understand that there's some site work that's currently being undertaken that would also require planning board approval. So Terry, if you want to just walk us through the scope of the improvements and tell us a little bit about the use of the the building, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, so, um, this is, it was a daycare center, uh, before a current owner bought it. Um, so that, that's why there's a drop-off there, uh, and there was play equipment in the back. Uh, so when, um, Michael bought this property, he, um, got a building permit to do interior work, and that happened like in March, so it was right before the shutdown, um, and started the work, and part of what he wanted to do was to paint, uh, and put cultured bricks on the bottom three feet of the building, pretty much at the shrub line that you can see in that photo. And build a patio to square off the corner of the back of the building, uh, remove the fencing and a pergola that was associated with the playground, um, and the- the- the old piece stone that's in the back that where the playground was, the old playground surfacing, that will be removed and landscaped, um, there as well. And then in the front, the front walks were, um, breaking up, the concrete was breaking up, so he's proposing to put, uh, a paver in there as well. And so that would be the same paver in the front and back, it's that reddish brick color. Uh, we have, so this was part of the whole Pioneer, uh, Park, and there was a lot of shared parking, I believe, a long time ago, I don't know, um, the specific history of the- the properties. Uh, but they have twenty existing spaces, uh, and I believe they probably shared the handicap spaces that were part of the Make-A-Wish building. Uh, so though we have an existing drop curb, uh, where I show a handicap space, that- that's currently not there, we'd like to put something there without, um, removing that curb, though we don't really need to have that drop-off area anymore since this will be an office building. You know, they're trying to track the Class A office, they're doing, you know, a nice high-end job in there, um, so so I don't think he doesn't feel he needs to have a lot of parking on the site right now, uh, so that's-
Terry, what's required?
Pardon me?
What is required in terms of the square footage in an office?
They would need to have forty-four parking spaces.
And do they have, how many do they have, or do they have easements for, uh, permanent easements for any of the other that they would need?
Uh, no, so there's existing twenty, uh, there are no permanent easements, at least. Um, we had a survey updated for it, I just dropped it off yesterday to Nick and Andy. And there is no, you know, cross easements for traffic on any of these properties. There is a, uh, permanent easement in- ingress egress from Campus Wood Drive to this site through the Make-A-Wish, uh, building or building or, you know, parking lot, and then a bunch of utility easements as well, but there's, uh, as far as shared parking, there isn't any.
Okay, I would, I would, I would just remind the board that, um, uh, this is a concept review, and so these are the things that we'll- we'll need to process. Does he or does he not have a tenant in mind so that we know the impact of the parking?
Um, I'll have to ask, last I talked to him, he- he might have, so, um, I'd have to follow up. And see, it was either, he, Michael was either gonna take it for his own business or lease it out, so, uh, I'd have to find the status of that.
Okay.
What's the rationale for repainting the building?
Pardon me?
What's the rationale for, uh, painting the building in colors that are so radically different?
Well, uh, the, he's trying to make it more contemporary looking, um, the- the red, uh, the old red brick was, he felt was dated, um, and felt that having a, you know, more neutral color with some of the cultured stone features, uh, was a more contemporary look. Um, and the Make-A-Wish people have already approached them, they- they're interested in painting their building as well, um, so I don't know.
Wasn't the whole point of this office park to have it look uniform?
Um, you know, I-
It's a very handsome home, but I have-
I- I agree with that, Steve.
Yeah, I think this is a radical departure.
By the way, if- if somebody, Michael or somebody's talking to the Make-A-Wish, you might advise them to go to the the planning board for approval before they paint.
Uh, yeah, and I think he just, I don't think he, you know, intentionally not got it approved. I- I just think he did not know he needed to get, um, the building color approved. But, I mean, there's other buildings in that general area, the- the hotels, um, that aren't, you know, the- the same brick pattern. So it's not, and the color isn't-
It's a different building form than the office building.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I- I'm disappointed, quite frankly, I- I always thought this was a very handsome development, and this is really quite an aberration.
Question is, what do we do now relative to, you know, we ran into this, uh, at Mavis, and the- the decision was to keep the brick the same, uh, they wanted to paint it as well, and they did, and it the- the building's almost done, and it looks great with the old brick, but how do we manage this? I'm kind of deferring to architects and, uh, our staff as to what can we do at this point?
Right, and to start off the discussion here, I just want to remind everybody that, um, the overall change principles of the design guidelines do call for buildings to respond to the vernacular building practice. So in this case, um, the building form is a little bit different than some of the surrounding office buildings, but the color was the predominant material, so this looks very different within the context of the business park now. I mean, all of the site facilities are pretty uniform, so please just bear that in mind as you're reviewing this, um, the scheme.
I think the paint has to be taken off, that's my feeling.
Well, so the- the paint that they used is, you know, embeds into the brick, uh, so they can't, it can't be sandblasted or, you know, washed off.
Then it has to be repainted a different color. I mean, those are my feelings, everybody else can jump in.
Yeah, I mean, I think I want to look at it in the context of the rest of the campus, I mean, I can't imagine having a building that's completely different than the rest of the campus. Fly.
Well, have you been to the, have you seen it in- in person, other than photos?
Not in person, no, but I have not had the opportunity to drive out there.
Is that, Nathan, Doug, can- can you and Joe convey your thoughts?
Guess my thought is, is how did they get this far with just a, with a, if they were doing, issued a building permit or a renovation permit? Yeah, but I mean, uh, wouldn't that have raised a red flag to somebody, I would thought, but I don't- I don't know.
I think that ship has sailed.
They didn't, they didn't get very far on the inside.
No.
Uh, no.
I mean, it's water over the dam now, but-
Yeah, I don't think they got very far inside, I think most of it was centered around demo, so I don't even think that we've we were even able to get over there and do any inspections for the interior to notice it. I'm not exactly sure how it came to light, but yeah, there is much done on the inside.
If- if the paint can't be removed, then I would say it would need to be painted a color that would be in keeping with the, uh, the- the design guidelines, the area.
So what about-
I guess that's the challenge now is to figure out, nope, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um-
No.
He- he, um, has, it's already prepared to have the cultured brick installed, he has several pallets of it on the site, you could see it in that image. So the brick, and you can't see it in this picture, but, um, the- the brick is uh, been chipped or prepared to receive, you know, cultured stone. So so that's another level of- of complexity because, you know, he's at that level where he's ready to install this.
Is the cultured stone the issue here, or is it the color of the paint on the building?
In my mind, it's the color of the paint on the building, I wish it hadn't been painted, but it has been, so, but the color is wrong.
Okay, so, but the cultured stone is fine.
No.
I didn't say- I gotta, you gotta look at-
The colored stone looks like it's gonna go with the gray paint of the building.
Yeah.
And we don't like the gray paint of the building, so I think you gotta find new stone. I really don't want to say anything more on my part until I go out and take a look at it.
Yeah.
Surprise to everybody.
Yeah. Because when you're out there, you can see from that site, you can turn and see, uh, several of the other buildings, and some of the other buildings are pretty well screened because of the growth of the vegetation. So, I don't know.
Well, I'll certainly a- ask the board to- to review that, uh, I think our feelings are are known now, uh, and we've, this is again, a concept review, this is not for approval. And, uh, we'll consider the- the, uh, cultured stone as well as the the, um, the bricks and the paint, the colors, as well as what- what options are available.
We also have to narrow down a, uh, a- a specific office use, because if it's medical, you're gonna need a whole lot of parking.
Yeah, I don't think he's looking at medical in there.
But- but even so, you're gonna need a lot more than you have. Unless it's, well, uh, we can't design it, and- and so we would also expect the applicant to provide, uh, colors and pallets that would be in keeping with what we've asked for, and we will review as well, but we won't design it for you.
Right.
What- what- what's the count, uh, Stephanie, for, uh, office use?
For this- One to one fifty, and Terry said that that calculation breaks down to forty-four spaces that are required.
And there's how many?
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
And- and did this have a variance when it when it was, I- I wonder how it got that way, or is this the new plan? Did the old, the daycare have forty-four?
No, the daycare just had twenty, and I- I don't know the history, but I think, this was subdivided into lots back in two thousand, and that it used to be one large lot, I mean, I don't, and then they created lots out of it, uh, 'cause I did find a, uh, a track plan that shows the lots. So, and I think when they divided it up, they- they only gave twenty spaces to this parcel. Um, I, and I'll tell you, we can't fit, forty-four spaces will not, you know, comfortably fit in there.
I- I- I wonder how that subdivision could have occurred, Jamie, was that before your time?
It was two thousand.
I mean, I think it was right, I think I came on in- in two thousand, I'm not sure what, uh, or two thousand one, I can't really remember. I don't know, I'll have to look and see what- what happened.
But we'll have to, we'll have to review this and-
We're gonna have to do some research as to how this came to be the way it is and what kind of approvals are out there.
And if it had been decided that- that it was a, uh, this is just as a reminder to myself and the rest of the board, that if it had been decided that it was gonna be a, uh, daycare, and that there would just be staff and- and a limited number of employees, and twenty would work, when the use changes, it changes everything.
Yeah.
I'd also like to, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'd like some research done on when this was approved, if there was an approved, uh, floor pallet and material pallet?
You mean for the p- park, for the Pioneer Park?
Right.
Any covenants or something, okay. Well, look, do that at the same time.
Right, I know, uh, Nick has been looking for something at Town Hall, and he has not found that yet, but I know that those things can get pretty well buried over in the records there. I would also like to talk about, um, opportunities within the site plan, if- if there's such a deficiency in parking that's going to be problematic, I really want to look at this area up by the front of the building. I- I don't think that this drop-off works with the space right in the center of it, and even though nobody's gonna be utilizing it heavily for drop-off use, I think that there's probably an existing pattern in play with, um, maybe deliveries like FedEx, UPS, even mail. And if you don't need the drop-off, then this should be reconfigured into a more organized parking layout. And this should be perpendicular to the per- to the curb, and, um, sidewalks should correspond to the use of the space.
Stephanie, can you drag that out a little bit so we can see the northern portion, portion of that? I mean, I-
Sure, you're looking for, I'm sorry, this is pretty well-
'Cause that'll, that can show the whole complex, maybe that'll help.
Yeah, I mean, it, I don't even know how this got approved in the first place with parking stalls backing out into the road.
I'm scratching my head on that.
Yeah, you would think that that part, the lot that's north of Make-A-Wish would be part of this parcel. Well, no, they need it because then they don't have any parking.
Well, that's my point, every time we do a subdivision, the first thing we ask is the, how much parking is related directly in this? Is there some kind of a easement, cross easement to allow it, and, uh, so I'm just very confused.
Yeah, there's nothing, uh, recorded with the county, the- the surveyor, when he updated the survey, just pulled this, the subdivision was recorded, but no other easements other than what's shown on there for egress and utility.
Well, I'm glad it's before us now, we'll have, we'll research that. Is there any other, uh, issues that, that's a good point, Stephanie, relative to the parking, relative to the, uh, drop-off? Maybe you'll pick up some, it doesn't look like you'll pick up a lot, um, but Stephanie, what else do you have to, in terms of the concept?
Yeah, just for site, I think it would be a good idea to, um, pay some attention to this weathered area in the middle of the parking lot. There's some pretty large cracks that, um, were evident in the- in the paving, paving, um, as well as the general refreshment of the landscaping materials. Some of this stuff is pretty overgrown, needs some pruning or could just be replaced.
Yeah, and I- I think he intended to do that, we just don't have a plan together yet for that.
We'll get all these comments to you, Terry.
Yeah and then though I did get Stephanie's conceptual comments and I had a question on you had a the building elevation showed sign band location I don't I just got a clarification on what you meant on that.
Is any signage proposed for this facility?
No.
So no monument signage or anything?
No.
Okay I just want to make sure that that was covered.
Okay.
How about any lighting?
Yeah I don't think he was intending to do any new lighting on that but there was one light on the building he floodlight but they'll they'll replace that or take that down totally but well I'll we'll figure it I'll get that squared away.
I guess I'm a little confused Terry why they want to put stone behind the bushes and only there.
Stone.
You said the stone is gonna go behind the bushes.
Oh the the stone well it's going around the whole building and at the base there are some images that we sent that show it you know continue the building.
Yeah it seems to add a whole new horizontal datum I mean most of the buildings out there seem to be very large window areas with very large solid wall sections.
Okay.
Okay alright thank you.
Okay thanks.
Thank you very much just as a couple comments I I don't know if everybody was on tied into the meeting I made a we got some plans for the Cravik project and I decided that we instead of having a management meeting collectively that I'd ask you all to review the plans as they've been submitted I believe Nick have you sent those out to everybody or are they on the web?
They are on the website I can see if I can get them in one single email to everyone I can resend that.
And then if you could we thought that by Wednesday if you could provide your comments and Nick will summarize those let's say Wednesday at noon if we haven't received your comments we're gonna then send out a collective summary to you all and then on Thursday we'll get that to the applicant and then they'll be on the on next the Tuesday the third is that right is that the third November? Because we don't have we have the we've up moved them up because of the Thanksgiving holiday that they would be able to have some ideas to the direction instead of a here it is on Tuesday I did ask for those before we waited for another work session so thank you. Any questions?
Can we go over the schedule for November just quickly you you just mentioned that we moved things around for Thanksgiving but I just want to be very clear that we are meeting on the first and the third Thursdays of the month and the work sessions will be adjusted as corresponding.
And then I think we do the the same and but usually at the December if nothing is paramount we would cancel the second on December the second works the second meeting.
Don't forget Andy had an item on the ladder security cage?
Yeah I I thought Doug made a very astute comment Andy why don't you make a comment and Doug if you could add what you did I was not aware of the OSHA requirement.
Yeah so Benderson wants to put this on the back of the ten K building I knew that this from dabbling a little bit with BOSI's that I had to take some OSHA courses and I knew this was coming down the line Doug you you kind of informed me though that they've done away with that and I did not know that if if you can send us some of that OSHA code section that says that they did away with it that would be really helpful I that was one of my suggestions is that they go to some kind of a tie off like a slip line or something like that and I didn't think they could do that so this this that would help out quite a bit because it really just kind of keeps the ladder almost the same as any other ladder that you see going up on the roof.
I mean it's really it's really quite a a large amount of construction there's a fence and a screen across the ladder I mean this thing gets ungainly really fast.
I did I don't know if everybody saw Mike Lazar's email and and he suggested that for new buildings they put them inside and that's something we can certainly look at going forward but I am curious to get a copy of the code section that says that they can get a get rid of that because that would make this go away pretty quick but you know always
Which is this that we're talking about?
This is the Benderson the ten K building.
Which one is that?
With Core uh Core Life is in it?
Okay so that's really the center of the complex.
Yes and it'll be faced as the last.
Yeah you see that from every angle.
Yep.
Well I hope Doug is right.
Yeah me too. The building it's still not gonna it's still gonna stick out.
I I had one other issue I wanted to bring up that's coming down the pike that I just as long as we have a couple of minutes the I had occasion actually just about an hour and a half ago to Mike Goodfellow talk to me and a big surprise the equipment on the roof of the his office building the old helping hounds or the the parapet to hide the and screen that looks way out of proportion to what the architect would like to see the architect is Steve McKnight and he's gonna bring back a different way to screen and try to keep the parapet in proportion these are not my words those are words that he conveyed to me so you can expect that roof lines and screening and the parapet to come back to us.
So he's looking at
The difference between the parapet at the roof edge versus the screen right around the actual mechanical is there a difference that you're you're saying that he wants to lower the parapet that's there?
Yes that that he had proposed they had proposed remember we we raised it to whatever it was raised to kind of hide the air conditioning HVAC system.
Right so I'm wondering where where the where it's looking out of proportion because we approved the elevations which the proportions I thought looked fine on elevation so
This is a discretionary decis you know decision on his part he the architect felt you know just looking at it that it was out of proportion so it's 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 on them I mean they they he wants to get this right and Steve McKnight I have a lot of respect for I know Leif does Leif are you on?
Nick's not on tonight.
Okay so uh what he what he was thinking and again I'm just just the messenger was screening it separately and more internally and and then having the right proportions what they consider the right proportions I'm not an architect I'm just conveying that you'll see this coming back.
I'll have to see it.
Yeah it's up to that more to take a look.
So I just wanted you to know that but it was all positive he was very excited about you know continuing and getting this right so I respect him for that thank you all so we have Stephanie you thank for reminding us I do have one other piece of housekeeping and that has to do with we usually do the either the first or the second meeting in January for our awards the Morris Schick and the Mike Lazar Awards and so it's supposed to be a beautiful day tomorrow Stephanie I think either you or Nick I don't care who does it Andy you can select we need a list of the projects and the and we do need some photos before the snow flies to try to portray it in the best light possible. Stephanie I think you did this before in terms of the listing or was that you Nick I can't recall but I'd like to get that out for our next you know prior to our next meeting for our Tuesday meeting.
Now last year you had asked me to do that that's one of the first orders have been is under the EDR contract so I'd be happy to do that again.
Is that all right with you Nick and Andy?
Absolutely.
All right consider it a request thank you all have a great weekend enjoy the sunshine.
You need a motion.
Yeah I hadn't forgotten motions adjourned.
I'll move Steve.
I'll second.
I'll favor.
Hi.
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 Hi Peter thank you all.
Good night everyone.
Yeah.
Thanks good night.
Good night.